Now I can see it.
This meeting is being recorded.
Okay, I'm not sure what just happened there.
We can't hear you now, Madam Chair.
This is Vice Chair Walters. I was also kicked off and had to boot back on, so if I missed anything, please let me know.
Yeah, on my end, I was just getting ready to, I asked Mr. Fitzgerald, and thank you for pulling that map back up, Mr. Fitzgerald, that maybe we could have Ms. Griscom address it. And I don't know what happened, but I just got a black screen that said "meeting disconnected", and then everything came back up. So Vice Chair Walters, I don't think that you missed anything. So Ms. Griscom, if you could, I know that you've heard the conversation that's been taking place. If you could please comment on that.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I also got kicked off, so I'm not sure. Is there a, I can address a little bit this question of section 23, and is that, is that your main question at this time? I guess I have a couple of just general comments as well.
Okay, the two that I were, that I was concerned about is the most westerly section that's in the pronghorn corridor, and then the other one that Mr. Fitzgerald had highlighted where I commented that the way that I'm reading this map, it looks like it cuts it completely off on that western side.
Yeah, so starting at that one, at the last one you mentioned, which I think is section 23, I would, I would concur that that particular development will probably inhibit most movement of pronghorn through that area. I don't think it will inhibit mule deer from moving through, but I also want to state, you know, in talking about centuries-long corridor use, which I think was, was brought up a couple of times, animals are also quite adaptable. So we've seen, you know, throughout the state, lots of instances of corridor shifting as a result of development or disturbance, and as long as there's a place for them to go with appropriate habitat, that could certainly happen. In this, in this particular section that you're talking about, which is section 23, that's kind of right between two areas of higher topography with quite a bit of pinyon and juniper cover, and so it's hard to say exactly what the pronghorn might do, but they, they could very likely decide not to go through that area. However, they can come around the southern side and go around the western side of the development project. So it's not, I don't see it as a dead end for sure from a, from an animal use perspective. On the far western section, which I believe is 29, that one, I, you know, I think the recommendation that we've made orally to Mr. Fitzgerald to cut off those, potentially, to cut off the sharp corners of that, the western corners of that section, could be beneficial. As you can tell, there's still room for pronghorn to move around that western side. And so we, at the department, don't feel like that, that that's a, that that's going to somehow completely keep pronghorn from continuing to use the area. And I do have another comment. Would you like me to make that now?
Yes, why don't you go ahead? If you feel that it would be relevant and timely, go, please proceed.
Okay, so we, we have a really great opportunity here that, that the department has been partnering with Clinera and CObar Babbitt Ranches to, to essentially use the collaring data that we're planning to start implementing this fall to help inform our understanding of corridor use by these two species. And so often when we're, when we're looking at these kinds of projects and trying to make recommendations, we really don't have very much data to make, to, to make those specific corridor width recommendations, which is a huge source of frustration. We know generally that, you know, pronghorn can be a little more skittish around, around people and noise and such, but we haven't been able to test the effectiveness of different corridor widths. And so with cooperation with Clinera and Babbitt Ranches and some funding that's become available, we're going to be collaring several animals from each species this fall, right there in that eastern part of the project area, and we're hoping that we'll be able to come, use those, that information in the next few years as this project gets developed to have a better understanding and, and to be able to adaptively apply that information in a collaborative way with Clinera and Babbitt Ranches as the project develops to the west. So that's, that's our joint intent, I believe, with this project, and it's a great opportunity. And so I just wanted to make sure the commission was aware of that ongoing important work, which will actually help us not only with this project, with, but with many, many projects we're going to be looking at over the next few years. That's all for my, my comments for now.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Griscom. I've got a question for you on the study that you're going to be conducting. So you said this study's going to be done on that eastern side. I believe you labeled it number 23, correct?
Yeah, I mean, there's two section 23s, but the, my, my general understanding is that Clinera intends to begin development on those eastern sections first. And so that's where we're hoping to focus our collaring efforts in understanding how animals change or don't change their movement and usage as a result of building out those sections on the east side.
Okay, so this, as I know that you are well aware, is a, is a multi-year project. It's not, it is not slated to be built all at once immediately. So let's say that in this collaring study that you're going to be doing, information becomes available to you where you, where you become aware of a habit, a migration habit. What are you going to do with that information if it is adverse? If we find out that it is adverse to that, the wildlife? And, and the other, and all of the other sightings have been approved, all of the other conditional use permits have been approved at that time say. And now we find out that there's a, oops, we just learned something we didn't know. What do we do with that information and how do we incorporate it for the benefit of the wildlife?
On this particular project or in general?
Well, yes, first on this particular project, but then I think I can, I could understand in general how it would be, because then you would have the information. But I'm just, I'm talking about this one, this particular one in Coconino County, this one we're talking about right now.
Well, our focus with that effort is really just to make the information available to, to Clinera, to Babbitt Ranches, and to everyone. So it would still be, I believe, on the, you know, the Planning and Zoning Commission, the county would have to review that information, and we'd be happy to help, you know, in the interpretation of it. But, you know, making, those are going to be potentially difficult decisions in terms of how, how do we apply that, that information? And do we, can we adaptively change accordingly? So that's, you know, we're not in a position of really making those decisions, but we can analyze the data and provide those results.
Okay, okay, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Griscom. Okay, I'm not sure whose hand went up first, but just on my, on my screen, Vice Chair Walters is first. So if you want to go ahead, Vice Chair Walters, and then Commissioner Best, follow up.
Thank you. This is Vice Chair Walters. I've heard references to this being one of the largest projects in the United States. I've also heard some talk about there being a game and fish specialist for migration, and, and I would like to be able to have some dialogue with that person and have them included in this process, because this is a...
Vice Chair Walters, I think you, I think you accidentally muted.
Oops.
There you go. Okay, the last thing you said was you heard there was a wildlife, or a wildlife corridor expert, and you wanted to have dialogue.
Yeah, I'd like to have him involved. I apologize for muting. I'd like to have whoever this person is involved to help us to, to do this. No, no slight to Hannah. So sooner than later, let's, let's get them in here if they're going to be able to answer some of the questions that we have, because we're going to make decisions, and decisions, decisions are, are not going to be based on, on, on these new studies. They're going to be, those studies are going to be for future decisions. But here we'll have the largest project in the United States, and, and we're making big decisions here, and I'd like a little more information.
Vice Chair Walters, I, I just want to say that, that I concur. I would like to hear firsthand from the wildlife corridor experts, if there, if there is an individual. And again, absolutely no slight, Ms. Griscom, to you at all, but I just kind of like to get this information right from the horse's mouth and to get an understanding, because I, I understand everything that you're saying, but I'm looking at this map and I'm seeing a wildlife corridor that has been mapped out there, and then I'm seeing a section of it completely blocked off, and I'm being told it's okay. And I'm trying to understand that, and I wish, and, and I kind of need someone to help me, help me understand that a little bit better. I'll, I'll end my comments there. Commissioner Best, please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I concur with, with what has just been said, and especially the western section 23. I assume that corridor is so narrow because there's some sort of geography there that constricts it. And I heard the applicant say that south of that was a wet area. And whereas we might trim some corners on the west side and get animals around that, in this incredibly dry country, water is life, and I would certainly want to look at that corridor. If, if animals are getting to water that way, that would be a corridor to maintain for sure. So I concur that we should do some more study on this. Thank you.
Okay, do any other commissioners have, Commissioner Best, your hand is still up. I'm thinking, I'm thinking you just didn't put, there you go. Okay, I don't see any other hands raised at this point. And so I'm thinking that there's no questions for Ms. Griscom on that, other than what has been put out. So, Mr. Fitzgerald, if you would like to continue, that would be, that would be appropriate at this time.
Certainly, yeah. And, and I don't, I don't know, Hannah, I just want to say thank you for your comments. I think that's really constructive. I'm hopeful that we can get Jeff to participate at another date to help answer some of the specific questions they have around these migration corridors. I don't know if there's something you wanted to add there or not.
Yeah, I'd like to make a, to respond to that comment, and that's that Jeff Gagnon is our, the person that we're talking about, and he is our wildlife connectivity expert, but I have been very closely coordinating with him throughout this entire process. The whole department is very keyed in on all of these issues, and we've been discussing them for months. So I don't think you're going to hear anything real different from, from Jeff, and you can certainly make a request to the department that another representative come to the table, but I'm not sure you're gonna... I don't think that our stances have changed much from what was written in the letter. Anyway, that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Griscom. Mr. Fitzgerald, could you put the migration map back up again, please? That one. Okay, I believe that number 23 is the easterly one. And according to what you said, on the south of that, that is like a wetland area, or at, or at least a water area for the, for the pronghorn. And I'm seeing it completely cut off. And I'm just wondering, you know, I'm going to have to agree with Commissioner Best said water is life, and if, if it's been completely cut off as this map shows, I, I'm still having trouble wrapping my mind around how that the pronghorn are going to get there.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I'm not, as a non-biologist, non-expert, I, I will just say this is a vast area. And to Hannah's point, you know, these are an adaptive species that, you know, this, this map also doesn't show the historical use or the timeframe over which this is being used. So I guess I, you know, to say that it's being completely cut off, I'm not sure necessarily, certainly this, this picture looks like it's being completely cut off. I don't, I don't disagree with you about that, but I think maybe the facts on the ground and the pattern of how these animals actually use this terrain would not necessarily lend it to being completely cut off. So, you know, like I said, I'm not an expert on this. I don't, I don't want to get myself in hot water on something that I know very little about. So, you know, to the extent that I can have a further consultation with Game and Fish about this specific section and talk, talk to the connectivity expert about this section in particular, I'd be more than happy to do that and revert back to the commission with, with any additional information I can share.
Yeah, and that would be great. And I think kind of going back to Vice Chair Walters' comments on, that we're really kind of preferring to hear, because, Mr. Fitzgerald, you self-admittedly tell us that you're not a biologist or a wildlife expert, and so you know I am not either. And I think, I don't think anyone, I don't think any of the commissioners would label themselves biologists or wildlife experts. And I think that's why we're really wanting someone to explain to us, make sense of this map, because it looks like it's being cut off, and if it's heading to an area where they, where they get their water from, on, you know, what's going to happen? And then we're also hearing that there, that this species is going to be studied or collared and studied, because it sounds, I think they're being collared and studied, because usually that's done when you're, when you're trying to learn about them, which tells me that there's, there's stuff that we don't know. But I'm going to leave it right there. That's, I'm going to end that with my, with my comments on that. On, do any of the other commissioners have anything at this time? And I'm not seeing any. So, Mr. Fitzgerald, why don't you go ahead and, and proceed with your presentation, please?
Very well, thank you. So I think putting the migration quarters aside for a moment, the other thing that I wanted to touch on with the commission, that we had gotten some feedback asking for additional information around, kind of lends just to the vegetation plan, and then also the native plant survey protocols that were conducted on the site. I, I think there's maybe a little bit of confusion around some of these studies and why they're conducted. And so I just wanted to take a few moments, talk about that, and talk about what we can do with this project to get an understanding for the presence of those species on site. So the Arizona State Land Department Native Plant Survey Protocols are required to ensure essentially that ASLD collects appropriate fees for the removal of specific native plants from Arizona public lands. This is largely to protect from commercialization of state lands, is my understanding. These plants are not considered quote-unquote "sensitive" or rare under the federal guidelines. So that doesn't mean that they're, you know, not valuable or an important part of the Arizona natural landscape. It's just that they are not subject to increased pressure from either climate change, habitat loss, et cetera. So because this project has right-of-way's that are crossing Arizona state land, we are currently conducting or will be conducting ASLD native plant survey that conforms to this protocol on those state lands. The protocol basically allows you to use an estimation technique or a sample survey to extrapolate the presence of those species across a larger area. And this is the protocol that we'll be following for the ASLD land surveys. In talking with our SWIC, our consultant, who I think Jill Grams and Nicholas Brassier are also on the phone, so you can direct any specific questions to them as they're a little bit more well-versed in, in some of this than I am. We, we will be able to extrapolate some of that information about the presence of these species across the entire project site. Our intent is, is that that would kind of give us a good, reasonable estimate of what is out there. We can also do a couple of other things where we can bring in a native plant salvage contractor to remove these species. I believe there's a specific license that they would have to do that under ASLD, where they'd be able to use those and either sell them or harvest them for, for use someplace else. In talking to SWIC and some other local plant experts, it sounds like these plants are really, relatively good at proliferating across the project site. And so our plan is to, prior to construction, put together a vegetation and site restoration plan that would re-vegetate the solar facility post-construction. So this is a lot that I just kind of threw out here, so maybe I'll pause for, for questions or comments.
Mr. Fitzgerald, I'm not seeing any, so why don't you go ahead and continue?
Very well, thank you. So I, I just wanted to quickly kind of just throw up a few examples of how the projects get constructed and what they look like. So this is a project that we constructed in Cedar City, Utah. It's called the Three Peaks Solar Project. It was constructed and completed in 2016. Moving from the top left to right and then down to the bottom right, you see the project at its pre-construction condition on the top left square. And then the two, the other projects are, pictures are the project as it was being constructed. You can still see that there was some ground disturbance. Some of the ground coverage has been removed, but there is still some present in places as possible, whereas left intact where possible. And then we also use relatively smaller equipment and try and stagger the rows that we trench in between to minimize really the ground compaction and the damage to vegetation during that period. Finally, on the bottom right, you see the project post-construction. This picture was taken in December, I think, of 2021, that shows that the, the native ground cover has, has recovered and is actually probably more robust than it was prior to the project being installed. So I'll just wanted to touch on that there. Something else that had come up was just documenting where the Arizona Scenic Trail crossed the project site. In documenting this, we realized that the project site is actually crossing two of the sections that the project has under option as kind of some mitigation measures to that. I think given kind of the topography of what is, I think this is section one and section nine on Township Four on the east here are fairly limited, and so it's very possible that these two sections would not be developed on. But at a minimum, we have agreed to a fairly sizable setback, and then also have agreed not to develop anything on the eastern side of the trail, so it would be open space to the east all of the time. We also had SWIC conduct a few visual simulations of what the trail looks like from the, or what the arrays would look like from those two KOPs. It's very difficult to tell, I think, on this PowerPoint, but also in general, that the arrays are distant and visible, hardly visible in the distance, and don't really have an obstruction into the, the overall landscape of the, the project. So there's that one. Here's a second KOP. Happy to pause here again for comments or questions before moving on.
I'm not seeing any. Go ahead, Mr. Fitzgerald.
Very good. So I'll just take a couple minutes, because I think it's important to run through the components of what these projects look like, so people have a real sense of what they are. Fortunately, I think Arizonans in particular are well-adapted to solar and have a very good understanding of the benefits of solar modules and what they can do and what they don't do. So the CObar Solar Complex is going to be using bifacial modules, which basically means that the back has a piece of glass on the back as opposed to being a white back sheet. This allows any light that bounces off of the ground to hit the backside of the panel, and it slightly increases the overall output of the solar modules. The modules are constructed of mono crystalline photovoltaic wafers, and then they're connected with colloid, copper alloy substrates that are pressed between two pieces of glass, typically with an aluminum frame. Because they are designed to absorb light to convert that into electricity, they don't typically reflect light. They oftentimes are coated with an anti-reflective material also. The panels that we are going to be using for this project do not contain any hazardous materials. We're not going to be using cadmium telluride or any type of thin film module. This is going to be a very inert basic polysilicon product. Solar modules, there is an emerging robust secondary market for solar modules, so we expect that when this project reaches the end of its useful life, these modules will most likely still be sold on a secondary market. Just kind of by a way of, an anecdote, typically after 25 years, most modules still maintain roughly 80% of their nameplate output. So if you had a 200-watt solar module after 20, 20 years, 25 years, it would be producing roughly 160 watts of electricity. So they're still very valuable and very useful at that point. Nonetheless, if they are not sold, excuse me, there's a typo here about Wisconsin. There's a company based in Phoenix called We Recycle Solar. They're one of the largest solar PV recyclers in the US, and that site is less than 200 miles from the CObar Solar Complex. Here's just some examples of what those, those modules typically look like here. You can see the bifacial nature of them, where the light is shining through the backside of the panel, and the cells are able to absorb light on both sides. Top left or top right here, we have an installation crew at our project, the Watlau Project in Iowa, and here they are on a typical tracker array, which leads me into my next slide. So the tracker system is basically a large table that many modules are mounted to that track the sun's movement imperceptibly across the sky from east to west during the day. They're usually driven by a push-pull motor. You can't actually see the tracker move. It's very imperceptible to the eye. I think they adjust once every 45 seconds to a minute, depending on the time of the year. Assuming that we were to construct all 1,500 megawatts at this site, that would require roughly 1,550,000 peers to support the trackers. Each peer has roughly a surface of 100 square inches, and so for a 1,500-megawatt site that would encompass roughly 12,000 acres of total footprint, the footprint of installed peers would be less than nine acres for that, or significantly less than half percent of the total project site. One other thing to note about trackers is that the arrays themselves are spaced out, and the tracker tables are spaced out significantly so that they don't cast a shadow on the next row. So ultimately, when you have a table like this, you end up in a situation where really only one-third of the ground is covered by solar arrays or trackers, and you have basically two-thirds of the same amount of space in between each row. So the trackers are typically mounted on a pile and spaced roughly 30 feet apart, and they do not utilize a concrete foundation. In the instance of this project, there is quite a bit of shallow bedrock out there. So what likely will happen is we will pre-drill most of the, the pylon locations and then use a special footer on the bottom that allows the tracker to basically grip into the bedrock as it's, as it's hammered in. The benefit of not using concrete is that after the useful project life, it's, it's relatively easy to extract these peers and refill the footprint of the, the tracker hole. I'll just quickly run through these last two technology slides, and then we can answer any questions that may arise about all of these. But here you can kind of see what the insulation of these look like. Here's a vibration pile driver installing the peers. Here they are being levelized to run across the row. Here it is after the table has been fully installed, and here's a team of proud technicians from one of our construction companies, RES Americas, inspecting some of their work on one of the projects that we recently completed in Iowa. Here you can see, and I wanted to include these pictures because I think... Here you can see, and I wanted to include these pictures because I think these will really give you a good sense on what we're going to be doing from a grading and construction best management practice out there. The solar industry and trackers in particular continue to evolve. I think 10 years ago, the ground essentially had to be dead flat. And now the almost universally, almost all of the tracker companies have adapted their technology where they can adjust to undulations in the terrain of up to 15%, I believe in the east-west direction. So that does really give you quite a large band of tolerance to work with, with the terrain to allow the trackers to accommodate trackers adjusting to the contours of the project locations. The final component of the primary system is the power inverters. These are used to convert the DC electricity that the solar modules generate into the alternating current or AC electricity that is used by the power grid. This project will probably use one of two types of technologies. The more commonplace technology that we see today is a central inverter. These are usually two to three megawatt blocks and you see kind of a larger centralized skid as depicted on the right, right here. Those architectures are actually being replaced now with what we call a string inverter, which is a smaller unit that basically powers roughly 250 kilowatts. This has an advantage of if one of these smaller inverters goes out, it doesn't take out a full two megawatts. It just takes out a smaller percentage of the array and allows us to have a little bit more uptime. And the additional benefit is that these units can be mounted onto the tracker technology themselves and don't require a separate footprint. From just an uptime perspective, it's also very easy for us to come in and replace this whole unit as it's to come in and try and fix or replace some of the components and a larger, more centralized unit. Inverters are generally the probably the loudest piece of equipment on the site. But neither one of these units can be heard by a human at a distance greater than five meters. Finally, the project will aggregate all of the power from the inverters into a project substation. And the project substation will have a step-up transformer that increases the voltage from the nominal voltage of the inverters, which is 34.5 KV to the transmission grid voltage of 500 KV, which is the same voltage that will be interconnecting to APS's 500 KV switch station. So maybe I'll just pause here. There's a lot of information to unpack there. Happy to answer any question.
Hey, Tom, I have a question for you that fits in with the technology presentation here. I noticed on the site plan that battery storage is shown in the area on the south side of the 500 KV power line from the substation. That isn't an issue, of course, but what I am wondering about is it is shown as optional. And that leads to my question, and that is when you do a fire plan, which would be required, does it take into consideration the fact that during construction or at some point in the future, that the battery storage portion of this will no longer be optional, but will be a part of what's done here in developing this project. And the reason I ask is because some of my research indicates that one of the most effective ways of fighting a fire with lithium ion batteries tends to be water-based and it may take a fairly large amount of water. But that is neither here nor there. I'd just like to know if that's something you take into consideration when you develop the fire plan.
Absolutely. I, you know, I think there have been some events in the news over the last couple of years about energy storage systems and fire hazard. The industry has learned a lot from those events and, you know, I think we will certainly be including fire suppression and mitigant measures around the battery energy storage system as part of that fire plan. I think I described it as optional because these projects, some of them, like for instance, one of the projects that we have right now is contracted without a battery. But I think it is possible that at a later date, the additional projects may also include a battery. So you will have a little bit of a mix of the generation out here where some of it is using a battery and some of it is not. But nonetheless, all of those safety concerns would be addressed.
Okay, very good. That answers my question and it also saves Mr. Short from being buttonhole with a procedural question. So we're very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Best, your hand is up. Do you have a question?
Yes, thank you, ma'am. Sure. Mr. Fitzgerald, are you open to questions now? General questions? I've got some from the entire report and I could just have at it if now is the time.
That suits me fine.
Great. I'm pleased to see that you plan to follow the renewable energy ordinance that we just passed. That's great news. I also concur with you about above-ground lines within the project. They're not pretty. On the other hand, if the if the rock is close to the surface, the impact of getting, getting those lines underground may be greater than it's worth, in my opinion. Trying to put it all back together and get it back to a native landscape could be difficult. So I agree that you do it when you can, but if you're dealing with solid rock, you may have to put some of the lines above, above grade. One issue that I'm wondering about, so in general, the renewable energy ordinance wants us to retain native plants and topsoil and landforms. And it looks like you're headed in that direction with the undulating picture that we just saw. One of the challenges that I think you may have, there are a couple of them really. One of the challenges is fire. We've got a fire problem in northern Arizona and all through the southwest. And I'm sure you're aware of it. How do you plan to handle? It says at one point in the report that the equipment won't burn, but the stuff under it will burn, you know, the native plants. Do you have a plan to control those plants as necessary, reduce them in some way that doesn't damage the landscape? And I guess what I'm saying is without chemistry. Because you may get in a situation where you decide that you've got enough fuel under a couple hundred million bucks worth of, you know, of these installations and you're worried that a wildfire could come through and take it out. What do you do? How do you keep ahead of that in a way that is consistent with retaining the native plants?
Sure. And I think that's a very apropos question and I am happy to take a stab at it. Is one of my colleagues, Mike Gallego, is our vice president of construction. Mike, are you on the phone? Would you, would you care to hazard a response to that or shall I?
I'm happy to take that question if it's, if it's okay with the, with the commissioner, sir.
Yes.
Thank you. So my name's Michael Gallego. I'm the vice president of operations. I do oversee all the construction of our projects throughout, throughout the US and both the projects that Clean Air has built and, and the ones that we continue to operate and the ones moving forward. In regards to fire management plans, we are, we are very aware of various requirements throughout the US. And, and if we take different measures, you know, in, in different cases, for instance, the, the project that, that Tom referenced earlier, the Three Peaks project in southern Utah, which borders BLM land, we are required to, you know, graze and also, you know, mechanically mow the, the grounds in to, 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 you know, support the vegetation from overgrowth that, and also to keep it, you know, keep it regenerating on a, on a regular basis. We, we are not necessarily hands-off when it comes to managing our sites. We, 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 you know, use, we use wildlife, wildlife, I should say wildlife, domestic livestock in very various locations to, to manage grass growth, you know, throughout our projects. And then, you know, creating, creating those, those corridors to keep, keep areas from, from being subject to the, to these kinds of fire hazards. We also have projects that are in, you know, remote locations like this one where we have water, water tanks on site that are periodically filled by local resources so that we have five to 10,000 gallons of water on hand as needed to, to suppress any of these kinds of fire activities because they do happen at times. Whether it be a lightning strike or otherwise, I'm a native Arizonan, so I understand much about the, you know, the, the fire pressure on the, on northern Arizona right now. In fact, over the whole state, I mean, it's just, it is extremely dry. And so it's something that we, we, we spend a lot of time with. So it's really, it's really working hand in hand with the local fire management folks and, and, you know, the wildlife. You know, the just, just, you know, trying to, trying to do our part to create something that, that really makes sense for that particular project is really how we focus our efforts.
Okay, thanks. So what I'm hearing. What I'm hearing there is I'm, I'm getting a
There we go. Okay, Commissioner Best, try now.
Yeah, that, that, that you use animals, grazing animals is exciting because we we, as we worked on the renewable energy ordinance that we just passed, we saw a lot of what's called agrivolt takes. And we didn't think that we'd probably see much of it in our part of the world because it's so dry, but that's if you will believe that I'm excited about seeing sheep or cattle graze under your facilities. I am, and also mowing. But definitely fire is an issue more and more. Another thing that I saw, and I'll quote you from page 35 of the report that we got in our plans on a packet, eliminating the possibility of non-native seeds being transported to, being transported to the site. And this was going to happen by washing trucks. You will never eliminate non-native seeds from being transported to the site. They are coming. No question about it. We, I'm glad that you've got a site in southern Utah. I'm glad to see that grass because we're kind of in the same boat as southern Utah. It's a, it's a tough world right now. We're in a 1200-year drought, as I'm sure you know. You will get non-native seeds. I hope that you will accept that and be monitoring, be monitoring for them vigorously and early. It's so much easier to control things when you go after the first plants that come up. So much easier than if you wait a couple of years and go do a survey and find that the first plants that come up have now become the first, you know, have multiplied by a hundredfold. But it's a, it's a, it's a tough world out there. If you, if you blade and disturb the topsoil in this country, you can throw down a lot of seed. And if you don't get any rain, you end up with fat rabbits and mice and no plants. I accept your commitment to do the job and I respect your expertise and I certainly respect the history of CO bar ranch and their conservation history. But it is going to be tough. Right now, there's not enough water to get seeds going, in my opinion. And I have a fair amount of experience in it. So I think that's something you'll just have to work out. I did see something about the birds, the nesting birds, the bird breeding season from March 1st to August 31st. Do you plan? Have you, have you surveyed and do you know that, that there are birds breeding in the area? Do you plan to not disturb the area from March 1st to August 31st? What's your plan there?
We, we have done surveys and I think pre-construction, we will do additional surveys. I don't think that the initial round of surveys did not detect any sensitive bird avian species. But we will conduct another round of surveys prior to construction. I'm not sure that we will, can commit to avoiding construction during that breeding season. However, if any nests are identified, we can certainly come up with an appropriate mitigation package at, at that time.
Okay, when when I read the section on archaeological sites, it seemed a little general. And so I think perhaps we are at the desk evaluation stage. There was also the issue of contact with the, with the tribes. When I believe that you tried to contact them, you got no response. And this is an issue that we're familiar with. We discussed it at length in our development of the renewable energy ordinance. It is a challenge. As far as the archaeological site issue, do you plan to do a more rigorous field evaluation before construction?
Sure. So just to address that, so we have actually done some additional field surveys on the ASLD land. And I believe one Kiva was identified, one sweat lodge was identified on one of the parcels away from the area that we would be using for the roadways. And I can share that information with the county if it has not been previously been made available. I think also we've revised some of our ASLD alignments and we'll be going back out to do additional cultural surveys as a result of those and refreshing some of our desktop surveys. Doing a full cultural resource survey of a site this extensive is fairly cost prohibitive to do pre-construction. But, you know, I think we are able to put together a plan to train workers and identify any resources that were to arise during the course of construction or pre-construction work.
All right. And one more issue. I don't believe you have located the buildings on the site. And I think there were some buildings having to do with the construction process. And then after that, there's definitely going to be a building somewhere for the maintenance staff to to use. And I just wanted to make sure that those buildings would be appropriately out of sight from 180 or from any other visual resource. Since they're not located, it's hard for us to know at this point what they'll look like from where.
And I think our intent would be for any permanent structures that were constructed along those lines to be near the substation. So that would be on substation 21, which is roughly four miles from 180. So they would be well out of the view. Typically, and Mike, feel free to chime in here. Most of our sites, we don't actually ever construct a permanent maintenance building. A lot of times it'll just be like a construction trailer that the, the crew is working out of. And then sometimes there will be some additional Connex containers to store spare parts in. I don't know, Mike, if, if you had contemplated something different from, for this project, just given its scale.
I could address that if you want me to.
Please, please.
So, so yeah, on a, typically a project this scale, we would be looking at maybe one or two permanent structures on site, you know, in permanent structures on site, you know, in, and we talk permanent structures, we're talking potentially a metal building to house, the house, you know, maybe equipment and a facility for bike technicians to, to office and work out of, especially during inclement weather. A lot of what they do is monitor the site remotely from remote command centers, but you still, with a, with a project of this size, that there still will be daily operations on site as, as Tom outlined earlier with, with somewhat of a staff. So if, if the project builds out, you know, it would be by the, by the point of interconnection. In regards to construction, those, those yards, those, those lay down yards, those trailer yards are temporary in nature and are specific, would be specifically closer to the point of interconnection. I, you know, had, I've been out on site, I would say that any, any trailers or lay down yards that we would be putting in for construction, the project would be, would be at least a mile or two off of highway. So I, I don't see them being out of sight. So that's, that's what I envisioned as far as permanent versus temporary structures.
Okay. And we, we don't need to belabor, just be aware of the issue. Final thing I, I did not see, and maybe this is a question for staff. Any standards for the roads related to fire and emergency response? Normally we've got an axle weight somewhere and maybe staff plans to put that in as a condition, but are you, do you folks think in those terms?
But yes, yes, we do. And I, I think typically what we would do is prior to submitting our building plan permit, we would meet with the local fire district and understand what their code requirements were, incorporate those into our plan set and make sure that they were satisfied in the building plan supplemental process.
Okay, that's all I have, and I appreciate your time very much.
Thank you for the good questions.
Mr. Fitzgerald, this is Chair Antoviris again. And I was kind of doing some calculating out about like total, I realized that these are not all going to be continuous, these projects, but or the developments, but am I correct in that there's going to be like almost nineteen square miles of, of development?
That is what we are asking for in our permit application. I don't think that that whole area will be developed, given topography constraints, some of the other setbacks that we've had here. And then also, you know, I think just as I alluded to earlier, that the nature of these projects is that the, the ground coverage is really only a third of the total site. So there is quite a bit of open space in between. But, but yes, Chairwoman, to answer your question directly, that, that is on paper what we are proposing.
Okay. How, how will you address stormwater? Because you know, right now, if it rains or snows, it just hits the ground. You know what I mean? Soaks in. But if you've got, let, let's say, you know, about nineteen square miles, eighteen square miles that are now covered with these solar rays, what is the plan there?
Sure. So I think for each phase of the project, we will develop and submit a stormwater pollution prevention plan that balances the pre-construction surface flows with the post-construction surface flows. And so that can be done through any number of mitigation measures, including, you know, different burns, channelization, retention basins are kind of the, the, the main tools that you have in the shed for, for, for that. But it would really be through the swept and the implementation of the SWIP and any kind of adaptive management to the SWIP that, that those would be addressed. Mike Gallego, I'm not sure if you have anything that you'd like to add there.
I would only add that we would, you know, follow the requirements of the, of the state, you know, stormwater prevention plan, which, you know, anything over five acres were, you know, required to go out and, and, and permit that. And so in, in doing so, I mean, we were looking at using technology that, that terrains as much as possible. So that, you know, allows for your natural water course, you know, for the water to still, you know, move through the site post-construction. During construction, obviously, we're, we're keeping any of that, of those of that pollutants from, from going offsite. But once the, once the project has been, has been restored, you know, up to that seventy percent coverage level, then we remove those, those temporary BMPs and any permanent BMPs and, and natural water courses will, you know, will, will basically take those flows back through the property like, like they did historically.
Okay. Okay. I think, I think that's all the questions I've got. Thank you, Mr. Gallego, and thank you, Mr. Fitzgerald. On, Mr. Fitzgerald, please go ahead and continue your presentation.
Sure. So I think, excuse me, I'm looking for my presentation here. Went screen to share this one. I, you know, I, I think some of the comments that we got from Commissioner Best really kind of alluded to the, the final couple of slides that I had in the presentation where I just wanted to talk about construction BMPs. And we, we've put together a larger kind of written narrative that I will be submitting to the planning director here shortly, that go into more details on some of the objectives of these BMPs. But essentially, our, our goal, and it's really our incentive, is to minimize grading activities and to select a technology. And by technology, I mean a tracker that can accommodate the existing slopes as much as possible on the site. We have developed, and I share this as a caveat, that this is a very high level grading plan that we've done internally, just looking kind of at the general topography of the site and some areas that may require grading. Our goal would be to balance any cut and fill on site. So it's a net zero site from a grading perspective. And we would really want to minimize and reduce this down as much as possible with tracker technology. Oftentimes what's used here and is kind of reflected here is what, what we call like micro grading or micro blading, where we're doing very site-specific grading to accommodate a particular row of the tracker array. So kind of among those other BMPs is reduction and grading as much as possible, citing the trackers to the project site itself, using micro grading, balancing the cut and fill on site, really using an adaptive stormwater pollution prevention plan, coming up with traffic and transportation mitigants that reduce the number of trucks and employees that are driving to the site daily. So we have kind of a robust document that we'll share with you in the very near future. But, you know, I, I recognize that our narrative may have been a little bit light on some of the things that we will be doing as best practices of the construction of this project. And really just wanted to at least call attention to the fact that we have a very good track record of implementing BMPs. And, you know, we're continuing to evolve those as we build and construct and operate more projects. So that the next iteration of projects that we do are using the most current and cutting edge BMPs based on our most recent experiences. So again, I'll just pause there. That is the end of my presentation, but happy to answer any questions about this or any of the other material that we've covered this evening.
Commissioner Best, your hand is raised. Do you have more questions?
Yeah, just a response to what we just heard. You definitely want to get somebody more expert than me talking to you about this. What you might consider as you, as you blade, harvesting the topsoil, moving the base soil around, and then putting the topsoil back on top. It's such a delicate environment out there and it drought, you know, may or may not loosen up a little bit, but it's a tough neighborhood to grow grass in. And that might help you. But there are experts out there who know a lot more than I do about it. Thank you.
Just to quickly respond to that, Commissioner Best, thank you. I, I, you know, I think that is something that we have done on other projects where we have segregated the topsoil and then spread it back out here. And I think our intent is to develop a more robust vegetation and rest, post-construction restoration plan that would encompass in more detail some of those elements that we would be using during the implementation of this, this project.
And I would just add to that, Tom, that Commissioner Best, that is the only way to have success when it comes to replanting soil. And it's, 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 it's a best management practice for, for, you know, building these sites and, and getting soil healthy so that it will grow, especially in these arid lands. So it's a, it's a process of, you know, that we're very familiar with, and it's written in every SWIP plan that we, that we design. So thank you for mentioning that, though.
Okay, this is Chair Antoviris. Are there any other, do any of the, excuse me, do any of the other commissioners have any additional questions for Mr. Fitzgerald at this time? Because I believe he said that he concluded his presentation. And I am not seeing any Mr. Fitzgerald. Mr. Short, do you have any comments at this time?
Madam Chair, yes, I would. I, I would like to kind of reiterate what I'm hearing from the commission. It's pretty obvious that you would like to see those corridors widened per AGFD recommendations. Is that?
Yeah, there was concern about that. Yes.
Does the commission have any, any other direction, any other direction for staff? Anything else you would like us to specifically look at as we move this project forward?
I'm very interested in any water sources out there. I think that migration corridors can respond to pressure and can change over time. But if there's a water source, you know, that's life and death. So we want to make sure that animals have adequate access. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Best. We'll take a look at that. I will work with the, with Jessica, the Wildlife Planner and AGFD and see if they have some suggestions on this. On what, you know, what would work possibly exactly as they have said, or maybe some alternatives we might look at that would address those two issues. Anything else from the commission? Any other specific things they'd like us to look at?
Mr. Short, I, I cannot think of anything. The one thing that I did want to ask, when you look at the the maps that we've had, what is the closest distance? If, if, like, if you could break it down for me to one eighty that, or what, what the closest one that will be to one eighty? Highway one eighty.
Let me take a look. Actually, there's, there's actually a one, they're showing the closest distance. I can show you that if you'd like. I can pull this site plan over.
Yeah, why, why don't we, while we're at study session, why don't we go ahead and do that? Because it looked, it looked to me like it was pretty close.
Right here, it said fifteen hundred foot setback from the highway.
Okay. And have you seen a photo sim on that?
I haven't, I'm not sure if it's directly from here, what we asked for. Now, this started two years ago, maybe, maybe more, actually. Maybe three years ago, it started quite a while ago. So we didn't have any Rio or anything like that, any renewable energy ordinance. So what I'd asked them, my, my biggest concern at the time was along highway one eighty, because, you know, what else, where else are you going to see this besides along the highway? So they provided us, I believe, four or five photo sims along the highway. And then, as we looked into it further more recently, I've asked them for photo sims like Thomas showed, Tom showed you along the Arizona Trail and also from the top of Red Butte. So there's, they're indicating, I also asked them specifically, are there any places along highway one eighty where you can see the panels? And they indicated that there weren't any places where you could see the panels.
Okay. So even at that closest point at the fifteen hundred foot mark that we were talking about right now, that reference point, you will not be able to see that from one eighty.
That is what they have told me. Is that you won't be able to see it. I asked, for example, I don't know if you remember that, the spot along one eighty where the, where it opens up and for the last case, the B-Rac case. You could see the, the, the wind generators pretty well from that was the, that was the most impactful spot right there. So I asked them specifically about that spot because as you see it, it's like, it's wide, it's just wide open right there. They indicated they would not be visible. I think they, they hired some, you know, experts from SWIC to look at that.
Okay. Okay. So you actually haven't seen the photo sims. And they're just saying you won't be able to see it.
No, there are photo sims along the highway. But I asked them specifically about that spot. Now, this is kind of late in the game, you know, so I, I asked, and I, I, I basically was looking at the Rio, and I also asked them about if it would be visible from places like South Room Ranches, you know, residential areas. And they said they would not be visible from there either. The thing that I think you keep in mind here is that I believe the, the solar panels are up to twelve feet high. And that's not super high for these longer distances. Fifteen hundred feet is more than a quarter mile. So, you know, that's, that's a pretty good distance.
Okay. Okay, that, I, I, that has got all of my questions on. Is there anyone else? I'm looking to see if I see any commissioners' hands raised or unmuted, and I'm not. So, Mr. Short, do you have any, like, final thoughts you're trying to gather there before our hearing?
Madam Chair, I think, you think that's it. We'll kind of put our heads together as staff and, and make sure we've addressed everything tonight. I did want to bring up one thing, and that is that the applicant has offered to provide us with the, the commission and staff with a site visit. And Tom, correct me if I'm wrong, but that would be, and this would include the applicant, Tom Fitzgerald, and Billy Cardasco would be there as well to take us on a site visit. And that would be at two o'clock next Wednesday, the first. Is that correct, Tom?
Yeah, that's correct. I mean, we can also probably accommodate Wednesday. It would need to be later in the afternoon. But we can make ourselves available to do that. And Mike Gallego, the, our VP of Construction will hopefully be able to attend as well.
Okay, so that's Wednesday, the first at two, about two, two o'clock.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So if any commissioners are, would like to go on that site visit, they can send me an email and we can arrange for that.
Okay.
And that's all I have, Madam Chair.
Okay, um, thank you. That is all I have. Mr. Fitzgerald, do you have anything further as we kind of close out here?
I, I would just like to say thank you all this evening for all of the thought and effort that has gone into this by planning staff, outside stakeholders, and all of the commissioners who clearly have spent a good deal of time reviewing our application. And I just would like to say thank you. It's been a real pleasure to work with you so far on bringing renewable energy to Coconino County.
And, Mr. Fitzgerald, thank you for your time with this additional study session that you did this evening. On, for us, I, I really believe that I can speak on behalf of all the commissioners that we do appreciate the information on, for us. I, I really believe that I can speak on behalf of all the commissioners, that we do appreciate the information on, in your presentation. That was, I, I learned quite a bit tonight. So thank you very much for your time in speaking to us and, you know, kind of bringing this up to, up to stuff on some of this stuff. Now with that, I am not seeing any other hands raised. So that was the last item on our agenda. And my clock shows 6:48 PM, and I'm going to go ahead and adjourn the meeting. Good night, everybody.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Good night all, thanks.
Good night everyone, thank you.